All right, it's six o'clock, so we'll call the meeting to order in a quarter minute.
Seven, six, seven.
Or seven, excuse me, seven.
Wilson.
Here.
Kirkpatrick.
Here.
Babcock.
Here.
Reed.
And Frank on yet for a minute?
The consent, statement of consent agenda, the following items may be approved in their entirety by the board upon motion made second and then passed by majority, any member may request a second vote on any or all items contained in the consent agenda.
Nobody has anything withdraw mode that we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Wilson.
Yes.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Babcock.
Yeah.
Reed.
Yes.
Yes. Item four, then is informational reports, first one's superintendent's report.
I just want to give you a quick finance update, you have a doc you have to find through because there's some documents in there from the consent agenda that's kind of used to sit on. We're on track to have a carryover around five fifteens, that should go up a little bit, but we've got some spinning stuff to come. I think we've got everything encumbered, so we're going to be pretty close with our budgets. On the general fund, building fund, looks like it's going to be around eighty-seven, but we've got some stuff that aren't encumbered, so that may go up a little bit. And child nutrition's carrying over like it always does, just very minimal. If you look on the backside of it, just want to get an idea why some things have happened over the last few months. If you look at Jacob Avenue, this is the overall local collections. Gross production is going to under-collect, we're pretty sure of that at this point, for the last three months, it's under-collected by five, six thousand dollars each month. So it's going to under-collect, but money vehicle has over-collected, RIA has over-collected, and school land earnings is looking to be right on track. So our local collections will be down just a little bit, but not at a tremendous level. Well, this is your month up, and now hopefully it'll recover. Any questions on the finance or anything like that? And that seven, seven grand you see there in the gross production, that is an estimate, a guesstimate. We don't know exactly what's been done, and that's just a guesstimate, we're thinking maybe read that. Legislative update, we're getting close to signed by today, so we'll see. I think I heard today that the governor released a tentative budget. If I heard right, I wouldn't be sure if that's the, was the story, I haven't been able to check it. One of the items that's been holding up the budget is the Senate-House debate over to that twelve hundred dollar raise, or twelve hundred dollars inside the formula, or run it like they did last year, where it's mandated, there's been a division between the houses on how to accomplish that. Not that twelve hundred's not to be paid, it's just how are they going to put that in a bill? So we're waiting to see how that's going to come out. There'll be a lot of changes overall for legislative session, a lot of bills come through. And any bill that wasn't heard, if it could resurface next year. So any of the bills that we saw at the early session that didn't make it out, and wasn't voted down, could resurface next session, so a year from now. Could be a lot of things coming in next year.
So have you been talking with the legislature, legislature on that?
Yes.
And what way he kind of leaning on it?
Well, the House side is force twelve hundred period, like they did last year. The Senate side is change the scale, but put it, the money into the formula, which means districts that pay over the scale would not be required to give that raise.
So where you talking to?
Murdoch is in the Senate, and it is in the House, but I'm referencing both houses, both bodies, as not individuals, but, you know, and I have talked to Murdoch specifically about it. Of course, we'd like just the money to be run through the formula, but it wouldn't help us either direction, you know, it just would not hurt us as much. But this is not, this is twelve hundred, not, well, fifty, six hundred, five grand, so much different. And then one last thing, from the alumni, said Mr. Miller and Freedom School Board, thank you very much for the use of the school and the auditoria, auditor, for the school, for the alumni banquet, sorry. I am proud of our facilities and proud to show it off to our alumni. Sincerely, Sue Reed. I guess that I read that to you guys.
Okay, we are hitting that final week and going pretty strong. We did some practicing today to get ready for graduation. We have assemblies on June seventeenth, which is Friday, there were assemblies. The elementarys will be at nine o'clock, and the high school will be at one o'clock. Remember, the elementary is pre-K through eight, so if you have anybody in those grades, it's the early morning at nine o'clock. Graduation is the eighteenth, which is Saturday, from, six o'clock is the backboard, and seven o'clock is the actual graduation ceremonies. And then we have a field day on June sixteenth, it's in the morning, it's where we go out and do track and field, and get our younger kids really involved in that. Our high school students and a lot of our teachers go out and help go through the day, and it's just a fun time for them to go out and do some of those things, and kind of see what they're like, and hopefully get them more interested in that while they have some fun doing it as well. So that's it. Have a few field trips.
All right, item is general, A is update and possible discussion or action regarding strategic plan.
Pretty much, most everything, as we've seen the last couple of months, is on hold for bond tomorrow, bond vote. We did have license point here to do some preventative maintenance, clean out drains, clean down roof drains, you know, snake out some things. We had the money already encumbered just to get preventative done, so we don't have any problems in the future. Found a few things here and there, so it was kind of a good thing that we got ahead of it, a lot cheaper than having to have them come after the fact. Did get the solid state hard drives installed in the high school computer, in the computer lab in here, had a few extra, put them in Mr. Stroh's room, speed up computers, and have a lead possibly on sixteen decommissioned systems that are better than some of our core two, our older, older computers. I'm waiting to hear back to see if they're going to be donated or not. Haven't heard word, they just said they had sixteen, we'll have to find out if they can donate them. So if we do, then we put them into service and decommissions some of our ten-year-old CPUs that are in some classrooms. So that may be good thing, but it's kind of where all bets are.
Item B is, excuse me, discussion of possible action to approve summer school calendar. One is begin driver's ed beginning on May twenty-second, the ninth, two thousand nineteen, June thirtieth, if I'm not mistaken.
Right now, we're scheduled on for driver's ed, the first two, the last two, rather than students at high school, in May. So that, that's what we're scheduled at the moment.
Who's teaching that?
Coach Ryan. Just be for the students. Students, and I've understood that we've allowed outside people, but they have to pay. I'm sorry.
Do you know how much it is?
I believe it's two hundred.
Just kind of there, if you were on understanding, okay.
And reading some, reading, the reading, summer reading program, we have that on there, it's kind of, it's a requirement of the RSA, Reading Sufficiency Act, but we don't think we have any kids that are going to qualify. Our teachers have done very, very, very well to get these students out behind, everyone's testing out now as on level. So we, we're pretty sure we're not going to have that, but this is just in case we do have to have a summer reading program for the kid that needs it, then we can't have it.
The possible actions, do we need to, do we amend that we approve this summer schedule? I'll make that motion.
Second.
Wilson.
Yes.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Babcock.
Yeah.
Reed.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes. Item C is discussion of possible action to purchase basketball uniforms.
The first quote we had was for one set, home and away, didn't catch that on the first bid, so went back, got a local, got another bid for a local from Compass out of Woodward. The uniforms that coach would like, good quality uniforms, he gave us a couple of different options, there are some cheaper options, but we'd be buying uniforms pretty quickly. Coach looked at them, they just, they wouldn't hold up. So same uniform that we had bid before, but adding the other set, so the total is fifty-two eighty, and you kind of got a picture there of what they would look like for Adidas. And that does come up for both of our coaches, a coaching gear, coaching uniforms, that is part of the Adidas versus.
How old again was the last set we?
Exactly half of this amount.
No, 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 how old are they, about five years?
Older than that.
Two, seven?
I can't remember the, when they, there were at least six, if I remember right.
Okay, we got pretty much our money worth out of them.
And they're going to be still used, they're going, they'll be used junior high or something of that nature.
Then we, handing down this. So the ones that are less than these, the three thousand nine thirty-six.
Right.
They are Allison?
Yeah, we don't think they'll hold up, the material.
The world's in it.
I don't know.
They're both, men's and women's, home and male.
So we got men's and women's here in the picture?
I answered.
One's an adult, one's a model.
These are just mockups, we haven't made a full design of them yet. This was just a mockup to see kind of the style of uniform. That would be the Adidas.
So for forty-eighteen uniforms, five thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars. For fifty-two, and what we moved last time on is?
Half that.
Half that.
Underarmored.
Because we only had one set on there, twenty-four uniforms instead of four.
Well, let me ask you this question. Of these threats, of these three bids, which one did you prefer? Well, the front page or take them with you?
Front page, going with the coach's recommendation, they want, they would prefer the Adidas, even though the underarmored is a nicer uniform and more expensive, they didn't think it was worth the extra.
Twenty dollars?
I'll make the motion to approve it.
Who is? I'll select that vote. Is that for the Adidas?
Yeah.
Wilson.
Yes.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Babcock.
Yeah.
Reed.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes. Item D is discussion of possible action to continue membership with the OSSBA unemployment services or unemployment services.
This is kind of housekeeping, I put it here because they changed their name, I wanted you to catch that change from Up Sukai to ONSBA unemployment services.
It's the same one we got.
Yes, they just changed their name.
I'll make the motion, we continue with membership.
I'll second it.
Wilson.
Yes.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Babcock.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes. Item E then is discussion of possible action to approve updated policies. One is DOC A Support Personnel Suspension Demotion Non-Renewable Termination. I can do that one at a time when we do the household.
In this web format, I want to do it.
Okay. And that's just an update to policy?
Yes, our policies haven't been updated in a while. Last update was around two thousand two, so lots of laws have changed since then.
What is, what did they exactly change there?
This one changes a lot, more than I could cover, you'd have to have rebuilt policies side by side, but this puts us into, and of course, this comes from the OSSBA, this matches the current laws, where our old wouldn't.
So motion over there, if there's any questions about it.
I have no questions, Doug. I'll make the motion to approve it.
We're just in the back, correct?
Yes, just four, yes, five, yes, for one, yeah.
I'll second it.
Wilson.
Yes.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Babcock.
Yeah.
Reed.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes. Two is DOC A V one, record corrected counseling support personnel.
Again, another pretty large change.
Motion over there?
I'm motion. Approved?
Yes, I'll second it too.
I'll second.
You said which?
Yes, I second, yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Babcock.
Yeah.
Reed.
Yes.
Morris.
Item three is DOC A E two, support personnel acknowledgement of received policy.
This will end up in our employee every year back-to-school packet for support police.
Is that something they ever added in, or?
It's a different form than what before. We didn't have a verification form like this before, it was a different type of.
Just tell them that they got the board.
Yes.
Motion to approve, I'll second.
Wilson.
Yes.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Babcock.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes. Item four is DOC A E three, support personnel reasonable assurance of employment.
We, we've already been doing this, we just didn't have a policy for it, so this would be the policy for something we already do.
I'll make the motion to approve it.
Okay.
Wilson.
Yes.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Babcock.
Yeah.
Reed.
Yes. Item five is DVAA Title One and Special Education Per professionals.
This changes a lot again, the main reason is because no child left behind references are removed, and that's a lot, changed a lot of this.
Motion to approve. I second it.
Wilson.
Yes.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Babcock.
Yeah.
Reed.
Yes.
Morris.
Item six, it is FFAD bedbugs.
New policy, we don't have it, but it's becoming a more common thing, I guess, so we need to know how the policy do, what we do if we find bedbugs.
Three point.
Right. Know that. I'll make the motion for item six.
I'll second it.
Wilson.
Yes.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Babcock.
Yeah.
Reed.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes. F then is discussion of possible action to contract with alcohol and drug testing in for employee DOT and student substance testing.
No changes from last year.
The word changed it?
No changes.
Oh, no changes? I'll make the motion to approve it.
It's just a.
Wilson.
Yes.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Babcock.
Yeah.
Reed.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes. Item six, finance, A is discussion of possible action to approve two thousand nineteen, twenty board resolution for schools and libraries, universal E-rate, the resolution authorizes the funding of the two thousand nineteen, twenty payments of the applicant sheriff on approval of funding and receipt of services.
Finally, it's taken a while to get this from me, but we do, we have it now.
What did we get?
This is the funding assurance that, well, for C-one money, which is our internet, E-rate pays eighty percent of the bill.
Okay.
Universal Service, Universal, USAC, I don't remember what it stands for, Universal Money, pays the other part of our internet, without approving it, then we're on the hook for our internet bill, and if they pay for their internet. We're still waiting on the final approval on our C-two budget, which is our, what we've asked for the backbone, the network switches and things like that, but we have the amounts, we know, once they click the button, you have a sheet. The, yes, the pre-discount amount for, one of the project for everything other than the fiber backbone is twelve thousand seven eighty-five twenty, of which E-rate will pay eighty, or pay ten thousand two twenty-eight sixteen, which will, we will be on, pay two thousand five hundred and fifty-seven oh four. And then for the fiber backbone, sixty-six hundred is the cost to put that in, E-rate will pay five thousand two hundred and eighty, and we'll pay one thousand three hundred and twenty.
Okay, so we have to make the motion to approve this, so they're going to help pay our bill, so I'll make that motion.
Second.
So you share. Wilson.
Yes.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Babcock.
Yeah.
Reed.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes. B then is discussion of possible action to approve fiscal year temporary appropriation.
Temporary appropriation will start next year, start with a temporary of one point eighty-nine in the general fund, two hundred and sixty-four thousand in the building fund, and three hundred and seventy, thirty-seven thousand in the child nutrition fund. That'll get us started until we get our estimates in, in what, September, late September.
So if we disapprove it, we don't get this money, is it, or if we disapprove it, you say we want more?
No, it's not that, it's we can't start, July one comes, we can't write a check.
When we get to want that possible?
And it has to go through the county exercise board before July one, and they have a date, I don't know with the next, exercise board, maybe it is.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that one.
Wilson.
Yes.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Babcock.
Yeah.
Reed.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes. Item seven is personnel, A is discussion of possible action to change the supervisor's travel schedule.
Kind of, nothing out of normal, I will be gone Wednesday for Doc's point, planning to take a vacation day on the twenty-fourth to go out of town again, because I've got Doc around twenty-third as well. But then coast conference, first weekend, June law, on June.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I said you got the whole time?
No?
Wilson.
Yes.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Babcock.
Yeah.
Reed.
Yeah.
Morris.
Yes.
Kirkpatrick.
Thank you.
B then is discussion of possible action to accept resignation of Robin Landis.
Robin has accepted an employment for another entity and has submitted a resignation effective Friday, last Friday.
Then I will make the motion to accept her resignation. I'll second it.
Wilson.
Yes.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Babcock.
Yeah.
Reed.
Yes.
Yes. Item eighteen is new business.
How do I mean?
Item nineteen is signing approved documents of need.
You're the board clerk now, all right? Backside. Put down that one.
That is Shane.
That one, yeah, that one, yeah.
Everybody's on the back of that?
There are two, two minutes, two board meeting minutes.
Yeah.
Those are the board meeting minutes. Those are the board meeting minutes.
The OSSBA.
I don't know them too, they're one of the signs, she's paper.
OHSUCA.
You're part of that one? You're signing that one for one set of meetings and that one for the other set of meetings.
We got it signed yet, Phil?
Yeah.
Six pages, we got that.
Just a minute. Russell? That's just me, he was not signing.
Congratulations, there you go.
Who's assistant clerk? Who is the assistant clerk?
Shane.
Does that get signed?
I'll second it.
I don't think that's, she's clerk, I think that's the, that's the...
Yeah, it's the county exercise board, they're your... Where are you at, B? I don't want to finish.
Item ten is to adjourn. I make the motion to adjourn at 7:32.